And so now I'm on the stapling and giving up some of the details on the local. So we're glad for everybody to be here and this is a great turnout. We still have people coming in, so that's wonderful. A little bit about the League. We're a nonpartisan organization, but we're all about issues. So we're nonpartisan when it comes to candidates for political parties, but we're all about telling our elected officials what we want and we're all about issues that we have voted on nationally, at the state level and locally to follow and to pursue as our items of interest. So let me think. What have we got coming up? Not much. We've been very, very busy. Last night we had our legislative update and we had Jake Collins and Mike Dugan and members of the League and people from the community asked them questions and also told them what they would like for the future from the state legislature. So I have some membership forms out in the lobby and also like a sheet of paper that says why you might want to belong to the League. So if you have any questions, you know, welcome to ask me. Now I'm going to turn it over to Bruce who's going to introduce everybody else.
Well, we welcome all of you this evening, particularly our candidates on my right Clint Chance and on my left Matthew Mumtahan. We're happy to have both of these gentlemen here as candidates for District Two for the Carroll County Board of Commissioners. I have a couple of items of, well, some other people to introduce. My wife Kathy who is co-moderator and serves to try to keep me straight during these sessions. Jackie Phillington will be our timekeeper tonight. Jackie has a series of cards there that paddles rather that she will wave at you at appropriate times, including the stop sign which she'll throw at you if necessary, I guess. And she'll be our timekeeper this evening. We'll have a couple of League members circulating who will be available to take your questions. If you have questions that you want to give us in writing, then please do that and my wife will continue to sort through these. These are more questions than we ever had in any form that we've conducted that I can recall, but with two candidates, maybe we can get through most of them. A couple of things about our ground rules. Candidates will make opening statements of two minutes and closing statements of the same length, two minutes, and they'll have two minutes to which to answer questions. They have flipped a coin to see who's going to make the first opening statement. That will be Matt and that means then that Clint will make the first closing statement. We have solicited questions from a number of interested people, including League of Women Voters members and from you as well, and this is the outcome. You see just part of me here on the top part of this table. So as we progress, if there are questions that occur to you at any point during the meeting this evening, I feel free to pass them on and we'll try to get to as many as we possibly can. Because of our commitment to nonpartisanship, we ask that the audience refrain from plotting or demonstrating support in any other way and that we all put our cell phones on stun, which I need to do as well. So we're happy to have members of the media here this evening. One at least, Sue Hong is here. Are there others that we should recognize?
This is Erin from the Times.
Okay, Erin from the Times, Imprecy Sullivan, right, sorry, right. From the Star News, that's right. And Dela Buchanan is our inverit, longtime videotaper of these proceedings too, so. Okay, I think that covers the ground rules. Anything I've left out? All right, we'll start with the opening. Okay, we'll start with the opening statements and that will be Matt to start.
Good evening. As many of you know, my name is Matthew Mumtahan. I'm a local attorney. Is it on? Well, the red button's on, but it's not.
It's red, okay. Jump right up on close.
Good evening. I guess so. As many of you know, my name is Matthew Mumtahan. I'm a local attorney, the president of the Villa Rica Main Street Board, a member of the Villa Rica Development Authority, a member of the Villa Rica Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, and formerly a member of the Villa Rica Downtown RSVP Committee. I have a law degree from John Marshall Law School. I have a degree in political science, bachelor's degree, and I have a bachelor's degree in planning and economic development from Georgia State University. I'm a member of the State Bar of Georgia, an alumni of the State Bar of Georgia's Young Lawyers Division Leadership Academy, a member of the Carroll County Bar Association, and I'm also the founder of the West Georgia Young Lawyers Association for lawyers under 40. I've also been recently named Rising Star Super Lawyer by the Super Lawyer Magazine. Most importantly, my wife and I are homeowners, proud homeowners here in Villa Rica, Carroll County in District Two. We love this community. It has embraced us and we have embraced it. And for that reason, I'm seeking to elevate my service to this community as your District Two Commissioner. I believe this community is a crossroads where we can look east and we see Atlanta coming. And we must ask ourselves, how do we prepare for that? How do we preserve the quality of life that makes Villa Rica and Carroll County special? In my career, I have seen what works and what fails, and I don't want to see those failures happen in our community. Rather, I want a Villa Rica and Carroll County that is thriving and prosperous and where graduates of Villa Rica High School come back home, make their lives and raise their families right here in Villa Rica. Additionally, we have issues in our community that presently need to be addressed. Water, future supply and infrastructure is one of them, but there are more illicit problems such as drug trafficking and human trafficking that we need to make sure the Carroll County Sheriff's Office and the VRPD are properly equipped to handle those issues, even if that means getting federal and state funds in addition to our own funding efforts. It is upon this that I'm asking to be your, I'm seeking to be your next District Two Commissioner because I believe the decisions we are making went out for over set the course for the future of our community.
Good, thank you. And Clint, we go to you now.
Good evening. I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. I want to thank my family, my friends, neighbors, members of my campaign. But most of all, I want to thank the collective body of individuals that are here today because it means that you care about the future of Carroll County. You care about your district, and I thank you for being engaged citizens. I want to thank our current Commissioner, Vicky Anderson, for her four terms of service to District Two, and I thank her for her trusting in me and endorsing me, believing in my skill set, and she has seen my work here in the northern end of Carroll County, and I thank her for that trust and I thank her for her service. My roots run deep here in District Two. My father's family is from here. I was raised here in Carroll County, attended Villa Rica High School and graduated from there, went on to get a management degree from the University of West Georgia. I've lived and seen the transformations of our community from the city of Villa Rica down Highway 61 through Ithaca, Bay Springs, through the Flat Rock area and into Fairfield. Those are all areas that I frequently visited growing up. To be a good District Two Commissioner, you have to understand the area. Me being raised here alone is not enough to be a good Commissioner, but all the things that I have done through my community service here and the passion that I have to serve people will allow me to be the best Commissioner for you. I'm a Christian by faith. I was saved at the age of 10 years old and my Christian values helped shape me and lead me in everyday life. I have three godchildren, Cameron aged 10, Bentley aged eight, and Jake aged five, and they all attend public schools here in Carroll County. I want to conquer the challenges that we have currently and seize upon opportunities that we have to pave a bright future for our youth ahead. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to the first question then. This individual wants to know if elected, what would be your top priorities, your two top priorities for the county, and how would you work to achieve those results? And since Matt made the opening statement, it falls to Clint to give the first response. With two top priorities, as we all, one of the main focal points of government is public safety. We have to make sure that we're providing the level of service that we need. And when we talk about public service, we talk about Emergency Management Agency, we talk about E-911, we talk about our fire, we talk about our EMS, which is privately owned, but is still supplemented by the county. So those are things that I want to make sure that we continue to provide the level of service that we need to our community. The Sheriff's Department, while he is elected by the body, just as you would elect me to be your Commissioner, they are funded solely by the county commission with the exception of drug seizure money. So we have to be a good partner in helping to make sure that our community is safe. Infrastructure is a huge need. Not only infrastructure needs here in the city of Villa Rica, but in the county as well. We've got to ensure that we have water supply to continue not only to provide municipalities such as the city of Villa Rica that currently utilizes purchasing water from the Carroll County Water Authority. Right now, there's about a million and a half gallons of demand per day. Some days, that demand is up to 2 million. So the county has to ensure that the municipalities that are purchasing water, even though that's a separate entity to the Carroll County Water Authority, that is one of our precious resources. So we've got to ensure that we have enough clean water in the reservoirs and the proper things that we need to handle our managed growth and smart growth that we want coming into our community. Potholes in roads, driving down roads at night where painted lines have been rubbed off for five or 10 years and you can't tell which side of the road you're on, those are major safety issues besides just infrastructure by nature. So those are all two, those are two big topic areas that I want to cover as your next Commissioner right off the bat.
To me, the number one issue is the budget. It's money. If we don't have money, we can't pay for public safety. If we don't have money, we can't pay for transportation. We have to find a way to pay for all those things and yet not increase our tax burden on our residents. So we need to look out for economic development to help bring in industries. We also need to look for other funding sources, maybe some user fees. We recently instituted the energy excise tax, other such things where we can pay for all these issues, public safety primarily. If we don't have money, then we lose talent. We lose talent to other municipalities and cities and governments, and we need to stop the brain drain. So that's the biggest issue for me is the budget and money, and we'll see the chairman's budget next week. But second beyond that is quality of life and public safety and crime. So once we, once we're able to fully fund Sheriff Laney's request or find some other funding mechanisms to assist him, then we can look beyond and look at policy goals as to what the additional things that we would like Sheriff Laney to do and the VRPD to do in order to stamp out crime and quality of life.
Yeah, thank you.
I just said that. I try not to gather questions when they're speaking, so you'll notice I'll pop up and down. So just give me the high sign, and when he asks another question, I'll come get your question, okay?
All right. And is this mic activated? Can you hear this? Okay, okay. Here is the inevitable bypass question. We have two or three of these. The bypass from Villa Rica has been on the books for years now. Where are we with this? And this person says both of you are now residents of the city of Villa Rica. The city is the governmental entity dealing with the Georgia Department of Transportation on the bypass, and is the entity paying for this road by paying for studies, testing, surveying, and land acquisition? Do you think the Board of Commissioners has a role in this endeavor financially, or should the Villa Rica citizens be required to carry this burden alone for the entire, for the region? So Matt, you would be the first to respond to this, please.
I absolutely believe that the Board of Commissioners has a role in attempting to find funds to fund the North Loop bypass if we can get it back on track sooner on the original schedule, as close to the original schedule as we possibly could. But again, like I said before, it comes back down to money. So we're just, we'll have to find a funding mechanism. I don't want to say toll road, but something. But the Board of Commissioners could, do need to have a role in that. It's an economic development vehicle for the entire county.
I can tell you as someone that has sat in city council meetings for going on 15 years, I can count on one hand the amount of times I missed a city council meeting here in the city of Villa Rica. I can tell you that I'm frustrated about the North Loop. I've sat right out there where you're sitting and time and time again, I've seen city managers say that they're going by the book, what does the state want? They want us to do an Indiana BAT study that costs $10,000. They want us to do this study. They want us to do that study. And the city of Villa Rica has abided by those rules, and I think that they should be rewarded. I'm upset in the sense that the North bypass is critical to be put in. It will allow us to get the downtown trucks that are clogging up our arteries, that are getting stuck on our railroad tracks out of downtown. The North bypass, for those that aren't aware, is scheduled to go at the end of 61 where you would turn left on 101 to go toward Rock Mart or turn back right to come into Fullville. GDOT was acquiring some property going through there, and then it comes out on the other side of Punkin Town Road. So if you live in the city of Villa Rica and you're a homeowner, you pay not only city tax, but you pay county tax. So to sit and say that the county has no responsibility or no fight in this is, is something that shouldn't even be considered. I will say that out of respect, the mayor and the city council is the first point of contact, but this is all about teamwork. This is about working together. So I want to continue to see what we can do. I thank our current elected officials who I know are working very hard on this, on this project, but it's something critical. We've got to get the trucks out of downtown. And when communities such as the city of Villa Rica and the county have abided and gone by the rules and done studies and done things that the state has asked for, we should be rewarded for that. We should not be delayed and delayed and delayed. So that's something that I want to fight for and work with our current elected officials to make sure that we can make this come to fruition as soon as possible.
All right, thank you. And then here is a related question. Clint, you have the first response. On which one? Trucks getting stuck on railway crossings in Villa Rica and Temple have become major problems in Carroll County. How would you propose to help solve this problem?
My concern is the one of catastrophe, and I don't want to talk, I don't want to dramatize or inflate anything, but the reality is, and I'll take on just the Villa Rica crossing Chief Streets, we've had truck after truck after truck after truck times 10 times fold get stuck on that railroad track. The city has done a phenomenal job with what they are able to do. They put up a lot of signage. They've contacted trucking GPS companies such as Rand McNally to try to make sure that they can steer those trucks around from Chief Street. The problem now is that some of those trucking companies are using private GPS systems and they're still trying to take them over Chief Street. So my concern is what if a tanker gets stuck on the, on the tracks, or what if we have combustible products that get bulldozed over? If you look at the Savannah Port, this is where all of this traffic is coming from. I think on average, we have a, every 15 minutes, we have a train that runs through Villa Rica. At the end of the day, I think sometimes it's more than every 15 minutes, but there's definitely a lot of traffic. So the reality is, there's just not a lot of time if a truck gets stuck on those tracks to be able to move it before it gets hit. Another catastrophe problem that could happen is that a truck could actually derail a train and it wipe out downtown. So we need to do everything that we can do to physically stop these trucks. The North bypass is a huge issue to be able to get them out of downtown. I've said this over and over again, and I know GDOT has a lot to do with not allowing to put up overhead barricades, but it's kind of like domestic violence. You can take someone to a training course. You can take someone to mediation, but at the end of the day, if they're physically going to harm somebody, it's kind of the same scenario. With the trucks, we've put up signs. We've done all we can do to try to deter them. It's come to a point we have to physically stop them, and I think we should try to look at putting up some kind of physical barricade. And that's no reflection on the city. Again, GDOT is tying their hands on that, but that's something we need to work towards.
As an attorney, I often sue trucking companies, and trucking companies don't like to pay money. So one of the biggest things you can do is put in out very high fines for every violation that we occur. And then on top of that, we need to do enforcement. Once it gets, once it gets out that trucking companies, that these roads, Punkin Town Road is another one where they often go down, they shouldn't be allowed. Once it gets out that this community will not tolerate the, just refusal to abide by the signs and the notice, then they will respond, because they don't want to pay money. More than that, they don't want to pay insurance money out. So if they hit somebody, they cause an injury to somebody, there will be a huge judgment against them. I'm hoping that that person retains me, but that's an aside. Nevertheless, it's just about notice, and it's about getting the word out there that we can tolerate that in the city. And I actually do believe that last week in Temple, there was a major accident. I'll have to check the date on that report, though, but I'm not sure. So they're definitely a danger. Thank you.
Thank you. A number of questions on communications and transparency in government. Let me try to break these into, into two questions, and we're asking one at a time here, with Matt going first this time. This person says, how do you propose to communicate to affected citizens, and how do you propose getting their input on issues, concerns, and desires?
Well, personally, I have an office right here off South Carroll Road, so everybody in my, in my district and entire county is invited to come to my office, meet with me, sit down with me and discuss their concerns with them, whether it's local, state, or federal issues. That's part of the open and responsive county government that I, I plan to bring. As far as day-to-day meetings and so forth, the meetings are streamed online. You can view them. But the problem is, if you look at any of the county's social media accounts, you wouldn't even know that. So let's make an effort to get the public's information out there, especially being up here in Villa Rica. I think sometimes we can feel distant from what goes down, what goes on down in Carrollton at the BOC. So we need to be out in the community more. We need to know, we need to let people know that we are here for them, that we're their representative, and that's my plan.
You know, transparency is a huge deal. I've sat in many Board of Commissioners meetings down at the county, and I've sat in many meetings here in this very chamber, and transparency has been talked about. I think in an age that we're in now, there's a lot more transparency. We have the ability to put agendas and meetings online. We're able to live stream. I will say that there's many meetings that I'm at at the Carroll County Board of Commissioners that they are live streaming. Those particular videos, and they are archived, the same here at the city of Villa Rica unless there just happens to be a technical difficulty. So face-to-face, social media, texting, phone calls, we need to do everything that we can possible, but we, we don't need to reinvent the wheel there. There's already a lot of mechanisms that we can get the word out. And at the end of the day, I think it's extremely important as a conservative that we take responsibility and ownership in our government. I want to look at having town hall meetings, either bi-monthly or having something quarterly possibly, that we can communicate when there's things that I need to get a message out to you to be able to hear your feedback. And then I need to have an open level of communication that you can always get in touch with me through a plethora of different things that I just went over with you. And I'll say this, I'll challenge each person to be an engaged citizen. Come to your meetings. Come to your city council meetings. I know that we've had our mayor and city council here talk about that, and we've had our members at the Board of Commissioners. At the end of the day, you elect people to work for you, and you work during the week many times during the day, and you can't always make a meeting, but we should all strive to challenge ourselves to be more involved in our local government, and that's the type of transparency that we need, that you cannot replace if you're not here in person. So I'll do everything I can from town hall to social media to all the different outlets, but let's be engaged as citizens as well.
All right. This is a related question. It says, I recently went online to look up the bylaws and minutes of past board meetings at the West Georgia Regional Library. The bylaws are not on the Georgia Public Library Services website, nor are they on the regional library's site. The minutes of past board meetings are not presented either. The budget and financial statements are not present either. What would be your position on access to public records? Clint, you have the first question.
Okay. I can tell you that I have been appointed by the Carroll County Board of Commissioners to serve on the Carroll County Library, and from there, I serve on the West Georgia Regional Library System. I'm actually chairman of the board there. I can tell you, I would, I would be happy to talk with anyone afterwards. I know that GPLS, Georgia Public Library Services, does have our constitution and bylaws listed. I recently looked at those just a few months back, so I'm not sure if the, the individual or persons maybe is not looking in the right area. As far as the West Georgia Regional Library System website, we're in the process of a complete overhaul there. We have a marketing department that's been working very heavily the past few months, and actually in the past few weeks, the site has been down some and doesn't have everything there that would normally be there. But we've got a revitalized revamping of the website that's coming out. It's going to have all the information there. I advise you or anyone that's wanting to look at that information, you can always do an open records request. We're happy to provide that. The administration is from the Regional Library System and can get you any information that you need. If you have a problem not getting that information, you can always come to me and I'll be glad to speak with the staff and make sure that you can get it. My work there, I have, we've had a past administration that has retired. We brought in a new administration, which we are taking leaps and bounds by implementing new business models that are involved in the system. At the end of the day, the Regional Library System is a multimillion dollar extension of government, and it's something that myself and my fellow board members have taken very seriously. So transparency, we are definitely an open book there. Be glad to speak with anyone after the meeting if I can help get the information that you need, but please understand we are undergoing a new website transformation right now, and it may be down, up and down from time to time.
I absolutely believe in open government. I believe in the sunshine laws, and I believe in everything. Open Records Request Act, I perform them frequently on local governments and city governments. If there's a document that can, I mean, most documents, these are PDFs. It doesn't take much to upload it on the website. If anyone ever has a concern about why isn't this document online or why is it not available, you know, it can become, it can be cumbersome to do an open records request. You have to make certain certifications and stuff like that, but if it's just a matter of bylaws or constitution or something like that, we're talking 10 or 15 pages as a PDF, there really is no reason why it shouldn't be online. If there's anything like that, if I ever encounter anything like that as your Commissioner, I would get on the phone with the department head immediately and find out why that's not available online. Of course, some, some records are more cumbersome and they're more in-depth and they require, you know, filing. They can't be just posted that easily, but wherever possible, it should be easily accessible to the public.
Couple of folks want you to talk some more about your experience as in preparation for the mayors that you have as Commissioners. What skills from your career do you plan to put to use as a Commissioner? Have you served on any county boards or commissions, and if so, in what capacity? And has either of you had any involvement with the public schools in District Two? So Matt, would you respond first, please?
Sure. As I said, I have a degree in political science from Georgia State University. My last, my senior year there, I interned for the Georgia House of Representatives and the Republican Caucus. Prior to that, actually, between my junior and senior year, I worked for the Paulding County Administration, local government. After graduating from Georgia State, I spent a year and a half as a land use planner in Paulding County. Then I went off to law school, and I represent developers, homeowners, builders, constituents, HOAs against counties, and I, well, can't say I represent counties, but against counties. I don't know about Clint's experience, but I'm probably the only one up here that's actually drafted an ordinance, and I've actually sued counties over ordinances. So I bring a wealth of knowledge when it comes to doing the local government. I've been there, done that. Oh, by the way, and I've listed all my, my boards and so forth, experience locally as well. And I, and I'm honored to serve on those boards, and I appreciate the city council for giving me that ability and trusting me that way.
I can tell you that my wealth of knowledge comes from service here in Carroll County. This particular position is for District Two in Carroll County. I was raised here, been involved, gone through the public school systems. I can tell you, when you asked, whoever asked the question about being involved with the schools, I've served as the chairman of the CTAE Board, Career Technical Agricultural Education Board for over 10 years. We have different community leaders, stakeholder investors who foster the business curriculum that is taught in the schools here. We help make sure that the students have the skills that they need to be able to come out into the workforce. I have served on a plethora of different boards. I believe I'm the only person, the only candidate that has been appointed to a board by the Carroll County Board of Commissioners. Also here locally in the city, I've been appointed on different boards by the mayor and the city council. I can tell you I have vast experience here in Carroll County when it comes to jobs and when it comes to our local economy. I was, my family operated, a family operation that I was involved in. I had a I was, my family operated, a family operation that I was involved in at a very young age. I knew what it was like to work out in the plant. I knew what it was like, people working paycheck to paycheck. I knew what it was like later on to be able to work in the office and have access to multimillion-dollar budgeting and having experience with that. I worked in Hometown Bank in Villa Rica when it opened up in October of 1997. As soon as I came out of high school, I learned every facet of operations of that bank. I got to learn a lot of the businesses in town. That was a $100 million asset company. So, when I look at my public service, when I look at the experience that I've had here on different public service boards, working for myself, the multimillion-dollar budgeting experience, and then my involvement in the schools through the CTAE and other mechanisms, I definitely have been involved in this community and I understand Carroll County.
And on the other side of the coin, two people have asked.
Someone just texted in that the livestreaming, that there's some disturbing distortion. And I think that maybe it might be best for you to try this microphone, see if that works.
Okay. Can everyone hear me? It is?
And they suggested that the candidates not speak so close to the microphone, but I kind of think it is.
Okay. Thank you. These individuals have noticed that, or noted that you each are deeply involved in community governmental affairs and in business activities and they want to know what you might have to give up, what sort of adjustments you might have to make to accommodate your role as a county commissioner. And let's see, Clint, to go first with this one.
I can tell you, working for myself with my special event promotions, I have a unique schedule. We promote different types of events, sporting events. During the week, obviously, I have to do some work preparing for those events, but physically, we're typically only somewhere out of town on the weekend, such as a Saturday. So, that gives me a leg up advantage that I'm able to have a very flexible schedule, Monday through Friday, to be able to continue to work. If I was elected your next commissioner, there is some boards that I would recuse myself of for a couple of different reasons, just to make sure that there's no conflict of interest. In addition to that, I would recuse myself to allow us to have more time to spend at the county commission level. So, I'm not really sure that I would have to give up anything on my business end to provide more timing. Something that I will say, I know Mr. Momdehan had mentioned that he opened a law practice here and I think he opened it in the city last week and I congratulate him on having that. But being a business owner myself, I understand when you open new locations, it takes time to build clientele. It takes time to build up your business. So, I'm appointing my business with the work that I do. We always want to try to, I think, improve ourselves or become larger or more efficient as we can, but I'm in a comfortable spot with the type of work that I do, working for myself. So, I know that I don't have a startup business and I'm not going to have to be spending time trying to get that up on the ground. I can immediately go to work for the people in District Two if I'm elected.
Well, I've been practicing law since 2011 and I've had my own business since 2015. So, I appreciate your concern, Clint. Thank you very much, but we're full steam ahead over here at the Montana Law Firm. Beyond that, I'm an attorney and I'm a worker and as of right now, I don't foresee having to step back from anything. I may have to step back from the Main Street Board, that may be something, but as of right now, I don't foresee stepping back from anything. I'm here for my constituents. I'm here for my citizens. I'm here for the voters voting me in. And I'm in the county seven days a week unless I'm on vacation or something like that. I'm in the county seven days a week. My cell phone is widely distributed. I think it's on every single push card I've hit in the, I don't know, most of this district that I've already, so I'm a phone call away. You might have to leave a voicemail, I might have to call you back, but I'm a phone call away.
Thank you. Matt, this next question will be for you first and then Clint. What involvement as a county commissioner would you have in helping to ensure that our schools remain safe in our communities, considering the vast number of school shootings seen around this country?
Well, obviously, school safety is a number one priority. Perhaps we need more SROs. Perhaps we need to look into some different, there are all kinds of new, I can't remember the name of it right now, but there's a couple of different entities out there that are pushing school safety programs, lockdown programs, where they can isolate shooters and so forth. We have looked into the cost effectiveness of that. But also, mental health is a major issue. It would be nice if we had maybe at the school level, some sort of screen for mental health where we can identify kids who might have these problems early on and try to get them the help they need to recover. I can tell you that as an attorney, I do appointed work over at Willowbrook. It's sad. I see the addicted children. I see children that have mental health issues and I often see a broken family. So, as a conservative and a Republican, I believe in family values. I believe in traditional family values. I believe in Christian values. I'd like to see any way we can to support that, maybe at a church level, get them involved as well. There's a lot of outreach that needs to be done. The youth today are quite troubled and we need to help them out if we can.
I would say, first of all, I want to say that the county commission ultimately, the public safety as it's related throughout the county is our top priority as I see it. So, it's something I definitely want to be involved in. In the same note, I do want to say that the Board of Education, who's represented this evening by Dr. Pygmy, they are the first point of contact in trying to make sure that our safety is implemented in the schools. I look at the issue at hand as something that is both immediate, short-term, and long-term. When we look at short-term, we've got to look at ways immediately to protect our children, whether that's arming teachers, whether that's arming police officers, or whether that's having security, whether it's lockdown mechanisms in our schools. I think that is something for the professionals to work toward, what can we do immediately to protect our students? Long-term, we've got to get back to family values. We've got to get back to things, what is the root? What is the cause of the problem? There's been many times, if you look back in history, 1970s, 1980s, 1960s, many students drove to school with a rifle in the back of their pickup truck. They hunted after school, some of them hunted before. So, why is it that they didn't pull out a gun during an argument and start shooting everybody? The reality is, we have a cultural problem in our society. We have students that are raising themselves. We have broken family homes. We have students that are being bullied. If you look at the statistics, nearly every child, as I call them, or young adult that has gone back in to do a mass shooting is someone that has been picked on at school or someone that has been degraded in the home life. And so, we have got to get involved and get a grip. We've got to engage ourselves as citizens to make sure that we can get a hold of this problem. So, the reality is, there is no quick fix, but there's short-term, immediate pressing issues and there's long-term issues that we have to address as well to fix this problem.
Okay. One more thing. The people in the back are having a hard time hearing, so I believe we have our PA system up as far as it can go, but if the candidates would enunciate and speak from your chest, I think we will all be able to hear. Plus, turn the air conditioning on hotter so that it's not running.
And if there's anyone here that'd like to move up closer, that might help as well. So, yeah.
You can hear me talking to them like that.
Right. But my microphone may be more serviceable than theirs, so if it would be easier for you to hear, feel free to, at any point, to come on up. Okay. Here's a couple of budgetary questions that would come to us. Do you support a user fee to use the convenience centers for traction dumping? Matt, you, no, Clint, Clint is up first.
I know this is something that the Board of Commissioners has looked at and possibly looking at and interjecting a user fee. I can tell you that as a conservative, you never want to implement service fees or you never, new taxes or anything until you've had an opportunity to review all the data. Going in as commissioner, something that I would want to look at would be a cost projection of what does it cost to run our convenience centers, possibly for the past five years, maybe even want to look back the past 10 years, to see what the trends are. I know that obviously, as our community continues to grow, there's going to be more and more trash that's delivered to our community, to our convenience centers. So, the county has to pay to go and dump that. And so, the reality is, the fees continue to go up there, excuse me, the amount that it costs the county continues to go up as there's more and more to take to the landfill. I will say, another thing that the county commission has looked at recently is how can we still provide services, but that we can possibly reduce hours, maybe we can reduce the number of days, but still provide the service to be able to dump your garbage? And so, that's something that the commission has enacted through Chairman Smith and a couple of the rural communities where they've cut back on the number of hours and the number of days to help save some money there. So, there are different, there's multiple ways that we can look at this. I would want to go in and look at the data and analyze. I would want to see if we can cut back on days or hours and then past that, I want to sit and see what makes sense and what doesn't. But as a conservative, I don't think we ever want to just right off the bat say, hey, we need to start charging. I will say that if you live in the city, in a municipality, obviously, you pay those fees to have your garbage taken off. I think the difference is, it's picked up here versus at the county, you have to take it there. So, I'm not saying that it's a problem that we don't need to look at and fees may be something that has to be implemented down the road or whatnot, but I want to be on the record saying that I will utilize and do everything I can to make sure that that doesn't have to happen if we can handle it in another manner.
I do believe that a user fee would be something of last resort if other cuts couldn't be made in order to make it feasible and budget-wise at the convenience centers. I use the convenience centers myself just because sometimes I miss the pickup days and I'd rather just take all my stuff myself. And it seems like the system is working fine to me. However, you know, I'm actually surprised in the length of days and the number of days are open. Maybe we could cut off some non-peak hours. Again, I would want to see the data, like Clint was saying in that regard, where we can cut. But I will say this though, when it comes down to it, I would much rather have a user fee than raise property taxes, okay? Because the power to tax is the power to destroy, as Chief Justice John Marshall said in 1819, and that's still true today. So, any kind of tax on industry, any kind of tax on business, you're sending the wrong message to your residents and you're sending the wrong message to the business. But for now, pending, you know, an investigation, I would not be in support of a user fee.
Couple of T-SPOST questions, special options, local option sales tax. What is your position on T-SPOST? And this person comments that these funds have been used by local governments as a slush fund to the point that voters are beginning to vote against authorizing them. How can the county control the use of such funds once they authorize a budget for a city? The use of these funds for a city? Matt, you're the first one up on this one.
Once again, a T-SPOST, Villa Rica's fortunate, District Two's fortunate, because we do get a lot of highway traffic in the sense that we get a lot of folks coming in, they'll spend their money here. We can take advantage of that, help fund projects and so forth. So, I'm not opposed to a T-SPOST as long as the voters vote that in, but as, when it comes down to how it's being used, that goes back to the transparency issue. There's certain requirements by law that the SPOST have to be posted on the website and has to be noticed. And I would totally be in agreement with that. Anybody who wants to talk to me about how the money's being spent and so forth, again, I would direct them to the proper places and try to get that posted online and be freely accessible. But generally, as far as, as long as the voters want a SPOST or T-SPOST to come in, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't step in the way of that, particularly in light of the infrastructure needs in Villa Rica and the new water system that we're trying to, the new water basin out there at Indian Creek that they're proposing, traffic is going to continue to come along. So, these infrastructure improvements are needed. T-SPOST is a good answer for that and it keeps the tax burden low in property taxes as well.
I'm sure everyone's familiar with what SPOST is, Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax and the T part of that for transportation. The consumption part of it is the neat thing, being able to defer the cost, that everything does not land on the property owner or the business owner to help pay for infrastructure needs. So, as it was stated, people coming in off of the interstates, we have people that just travel through our community from one community to the next, that want to stop in a need and stop at our gas stores. That will help fund the percentage of the T-SPOST that would be able to be allocated. At the end of the day, there are many great things that that T-SPOST could provide in our infrastructure needs. We talk about roads. We talk about resurfacing. We talk about red lights. We talk about sidewalks, something that the City of Villa Rica is looking to implement. It's already actually had a ribbon cutting and looking deep into is the Fullville Trailhead Project. That's something that we could get some money to actually jumpstart that particular project. So, at the end of the day, it would be a referendum that would go before the voters and they could vote on that, but I think there's a lot of pros to that, deferring the tax burden not on just the property and the business owners. As far as the slush fund part of it, I think that government can do a better job of relaying exactly what these projects are going to be used for. I understand that when you write up these referendums, that you want to put things in there in a generic sense, so you're not tied so specifically to exactly how it has to be used or it's going to break the law. But in the same note, we need to be able to communicate the message, not only what this is going to be used for, but we're giving updates, we're telling the community, this is where we're at on this project. This is how much further we think that it's going to take to complete the project. So, a slush fund, you know, you can call it anything you want. There's any line item that can be abused in government if it's not controlled.
This question concerns violence against women funds coming into Carroll County and being dispersed by the Board of Commissioners. Are you aware of the various funds coming into the county for this purpose and how would you utilize them? Clint, you would be first for this one.
I can tell you, I know that domestic violence, mental health issues, that we have a lot of things going on in our community right now and it's sad and unfortunate. I was at the Carroll County Board of Commissioners' meeting, I think it was two months ago, when Judge Betty Kason was there and she has seen so much going on that's dealing with mental health and dealing with domestic violence and different things, that she actually asked the Board of Commissioners to fund a particular position so that she could get an additional person on staff to help her with these particular issues. The good thing about it, the commission did approve that, but it is a grant that she can get reimbursed, to reimburse the commission from the state of Georgia. You know, there's a lot of things, when we look at Willowbrook, when we talk about mental health, mental health comes from a variety of different things. Sometimes it's drug abuse, sometimes it's domestic violence, someone that's being beaten or raped, or all the uncomfortable things that we don't want to talk about. President Lloyd Howard, President of Tanner Health System, he spoke at a success launching a while back and I've known Lloyd for a long time, and he talked about at Willowbrook that it has had someone admitted into that particular facility from every county in the state of Georgia. And the reality is, there is just not enough, and I have members of my family here that work in this line of work as well, there's just not enough facilities to handle all of this type of abuse and things that are going on. So, I am aware that the county commission is trying to help fund and work toward helping with this epidemic, but here again, we as community members are going to have to rally around when we see domestic violence, we're going to have to help in ways that we can or intervene. We're going to have to use our churches to get involved. We're going to have to be strong advocates. The government can help in a lot of ways and we should expect that, but at the end of the day, when we talk about living in government, government can't control everything in our lives. We have a personal responsibility to intervene when necessary.
Sitting here today, I can't say that I know every dollar about the domestic violence funds that are coming into the county. I do know that they do receive them. I know that certain people may have questions regarding the propriety of their use in the county. Of course, as part of my open and responsive county government, I would absolutely speak with anybody about that issue, delve into it and find out and be an advocate for that person on trying to find out how those funds are being used and that they're being used in the proper way, like they're state mandated to be used. When it comes to mental health and so forth, again, I do appoint cases at Willowbrook all the time. It's sad what you see there. And one of the things that we did back in the seventies was that we shut down the mental hospitals, and that left a lot of our homeless and mental health people on the streets. So it's an issue in our society that we have to watch out for. Beyond that, I forgot where I was going there, I apologize.
Thank you. Many citizens will argue that the government taxes them too much, yet this is the way that governments obtain the funds necessary to operate. What do you see as means to free the coffers of government? Matt?
Like I said before, I do believe in the notion that the power to tax is the power to destroy. And I absolutely would find any opportunity I could to repeal or lower a property tax. But unfortunately, our government structure is based upon funding from property taxes. So it would be a complete overhaul of your tax system, something that would have to be done at almost the state or even federal level in order to support such overhaul. But beyond that, anything you can do to lower taxes, and lower taxes on business and the residents, and decrease that tax burden would be good.
When we think about taxation and our government working for ourselves, the way we have to look at things is, what is the level of service that we expect for the amount of taxes that we pay? If we want all kinds of services and this, 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 and this, we're going to have to pay for it. It's kind of like going out to eat. Do you just want the hamburger and fries and a water? Or do you want the Coke, and do you want the dessert? And do you want the, everything that comes with the trimmings and the salad and everything else? So it's a matter of a balancing act, the amount of taxes that we take in and providing the level of services that we need. I think one thing that we have to always do is, we have to look at ways that we can streamline. A business model that worked in government in 1985 may not be applicable in 2018. We have to constantly look at ways to revamp, to re-ingenuity, entrepreneurial, everything that we can think of in government to work properly for us. I think at the end of the day, if you look at a lot of the problems that we have, and things and issues that are brought before municipalities and at the county level, it's like, wow, we haven't changed this in 10 years, or wow, we haven't changed this method in 20 years. It's just like a car, you know? 20 years ago, you had to have a V8 if you wanted a powerful engine. Now they've got four cylinders or six cylinders with turbos on it, and they've got more power than a V8 does. So it's kind of the same theory in government. We have to constantly look at ways to innovate and move forward in all of our business models and how we run our daily operations, to look at ways that we can streamline to help save funds in that manner.
Small businesses have a profound effect on revenue in our state. Reg月 permanent residents and naturalized citizens contribute whatever building dollars in state and local taxes each year. How will you help ensure the county is a welcoming place for foreign bond entrepreneurs and their families? And Clint, you're up first for this one, please.
Well, I would say, as a conservative and as a Republican, I think most people will tell you that our values are, we want an equal level playing field, right? No one likes to think that their neighbor got special treatment, but that we didn't get it ourselves. So I think what we have to do is, we have to have a pro-business environment. I think as long as you are here legally, in any form, and you're abiding by all laws of our country, I welcome you. It doesn't matter what creed, or what nationality, or what religion you are. That's what makes everything great about America that was founded on. But to provide certain special things just because someone is of foreign descent, I think leads down the road for discrimination. And I think we all want to be on an equal level playing field. I think when we look at pro-business, we have to look at ways to not have so many regulations on the books. We look at policies and we look at regulations, and we are, just because something is a good idea, doesn't mean it has to be a new regulation or a new policy. We need to look at things that we have in place. We have to have certain regulations in place, but at the end of the day, the less restrictions we have, the more open and free that we're going to be able to bring in new business. Small businesses is the backbone of our country. Ingenuity, entrepreneurship, all of those things are part of the founding of our country. So I want to provide a pro-business environment that everyone sees an equal playing field and has an equal opportunity to succeed in this country. That's what America's all about.
Absolutely. As long as somebody has come here and they're coming here legally, and their paperwork is in order and so forth, I have no issue with them working here and even owning a small business as appropriate under the federal immigration laws. E-Verifys are a regulation that, you know, could be used more to verify whether or not, whether or not somebody's here legally and doing business here illegally. A small business makes up something like 70 to 80% of your economy. It's very essential. I'm a small business owner myself, and very important. I know that in order to get a government contract, I have to go through the E-Verify process, even though I don't even have a, I wouldn't otherwise have to go through the E-Verify process. So to get set on, I believe it works, so.
How do you view the relationship with Douglas County, Villarica's relationship with Douglas County? Matt?
Well, they just recently denied the annexation plan, so I guess it's not that great. Well, you know, I guess we have a love-hate relationship with Douglas County. Most of our, most of the residents in the city limits of Villarica live in Mirror Lake, which is over there on the Douglas County side. But sometimes they probably get the impression that they feel like they're on an island out there when it comes to Douglas County services. So I can't speak to what goes on over there in Douglasville, you know, I'm just focused here on Carroll County and Villarica, but I would assume it's a love-hate relationship, I guess. Perhaps Mayor Reese can speak to that better than I could.
I would say first and foremost, as your County Commissioner for District 2 in Carroll County, the constituents inside of Carroll County are obviously my first concern and those that I need to look after. With that stated, half of my district is the city limits of Villarica. Right now, population-wise, the demographics, you've got about 60% that is in Carroll County and about 40% in Douglas County, as it was stated. The majority of Mirror Lake, with the exception, I think, of four or five homes are on the Douglas County side. I know that Ms. Ann Guider, who is the current Commissioner for this particular area on the Douglas County side, I think she's someone that, you know, we would want to work with. As a Commissioner, at the end of the day, we have to look at the totality picture. So when we're talking about creating projects, and the city of Villarica is tackling those projects, they're not talking about tackling projects for the Carroll County side or for the Douglas County side. They're talking about Villarica. So by nature, by default, as a County Commissioner for Carroll County, obviously I have to look after those citizens first. But in the same note, if we're going to get capital projects done, there are things that are going to benefit all of Villarica, that includes part of Douglas County. So we have to have a good working relationship with them. I would love the opportunity to get to know the new administration on the Douglas County side, because at the end of the day, we're all neighbors and we all have to work together as a team. So that's why I see that particular issue.
Clint, for you first. Are you aware of any specific talks about annexing Fairfield into the city of Villarica, and what would be your position on this issue?
I know that there has been just some chatter, what I call chatter, about annexation in the newspaper recently. I know the city of Villarica did request annexing some property on the Douglas County side. And so many times, and this is not any fault of the papers, but when you talk about Villarica in general, some people may not understand, maybe it's just within the city limits of Villarica. This is something, though, that has been talked about in years past. I can tell you, here again, I think it's just chatter, I'm not aware of any concrete information that says that that's being heavily looked at. As your next County Commissioner, if the P O A, the Property Owners Association of Fairfield, came to me and they wanted more information about this, I can tell you how I would handle the process, is that I would come to the mayor and city council in the city of Villarica, and I'd want to talk to them to see, is it something that would even be feasible if the residents of Fairfield wanted that? There was things that I would have to make sure, that I would have to be convinced about, such as infrastructure needs, sewer, we would have to look at roads, I would have to know, would the roads have to be brought up to standards? Would we be able to keep the gated community or not? Fire and rescue, all of those are pertinent questions that I would have to have more information about. Contiguous property connecting to one another, it's my understanding and looking into some of the law on that, that the property itself may not have to connect, but a connecting road, I think, has to be within 50 feet of a property that you're trying to annex in. So I've done a little bit of research just so I could be educated about it, since there's some chatter. But those are, that's how I would handle the process of trying to get more information if I was confronted about that in an official capacity from the Fairfield P O A. But here again, at this point, it's just chatter, my understanding.
I've heard that concern among Fairfield residents about this notion of Villarica annexing, and I believe the underlying current of that would be that we want to access, that Villarica will want access to the lake for water supply issues. But again, as far as I know and what I've heard, I don't believe that's going to happen, at least at this time. When it comes to annexation, Clint's right, you do have to continuous annexation. I would have to look into what he was saying about the road annexation, but generally spoke annexation was done a little over the 1980s. It's no longer allowed, but maybe there is some provision for some small craft of land or something like that that I would have to look into. So in order to annex in Fairfield, you would then have to continuously annex in other properties down the line, which means then the city of Villarica would then have to provide services to those, those other continuous properties, police services, water service, sewer service even perhaps. Then maybe it becomes quite expensive there for the city of Villarica then to annex in if the so-called benefit would be to get access to Fairfield's lake for water purposes. So I don't see it happening where I sit, I don't see the feasibility of it, but you never know what's going to happen in our future. And from what I hear, the folks in Fairfield would not like that, so I don't think I could support that. I would have to hear more from what the folks in the city of Villarica would like, though.
Matt, this one for you first. The question is, how do you plan to help senior citizens in District 2, especially since certain tax discounts, or certain discounts have been eliminated?
Well, I'm going to go on a limb here, and I'm going to assume that those tax discounts will be back in as soon as the referendum passes. I believe it's scheduled for November. I know I would definitely go for it. Again, I'm against any kind of property tax if I can, if we can make it happen. As far as services, other services, I would have to hear more specific concerns. I know we recently started, are going to start this coming summer, a transit service that is probably aimed for seniors, but I believe it is for a kind of open and wide consumption. Maybe discounts on the water bill and so forth like that. I would entertain those, but again, you know, the city, the county, excuse me, has a budget issue and money issue, and we need to find ways to pay for services for everybody, so.
I can tell you, senior citizens are near and dear to me. There's a laughing joke that I've always hung out with people growing up, 20 or 30 years older than me, simply because I started working at such an early age. Senior citizens are the backbone of this country and of this community. At the end of the day, we do have to pay for bills, we have services that everyone has to chip in on. But at the end of the day, most of our senior services have done their time in society. They've helped build the building blocks for where we're at today, so that the next generation coming in can have, still needs to work hard, but they can have more opportunities and a better future ahead. So I definitely support where we can help out seniors, no doubt. I know that, for instance, in the city of Villarica, the mayor and the city council has been very responsive. They had to go up on water and sewer rates here because they were dealing with problems that have continued to fester in our infrastructure within the city portion, but they've recently raised that back up, I think, to around a combined median income around $30,000 or a little more per household. So I think that local government is trying to be considerate of that. But I can tell you, also, my grandmother is 92 years old. My mother and I both go and help see after her, she is still able to care for herself. But I have a big place in my heart for seniors and what they've done to help build the infrastructure of our community and of our nation, so that we can have better opportunities ahead. So I would do everything within reason, but still of a responsible manner of running our government to help our seniors.
Thank you. Matt, you'll be first on this next quest, no, Clint will be first on this next question.
I did, yes.
This, several questions related to law enforcement. People want to know your position on local law enforcement agencies and your support if any for them in the past, what you think about certain major issues in the county related to drugs. One person here has mentioned kidnapping and human traffic, human trafficking in this area, in Villarica. Another has mentioned manpower shortages, shortage in the Carroll County Sheriff's Office. So would you comment as specifically as you can on these questions that have been raised about law enforcement? And Clint, as I said, I think this one goes to you first.
Okay, I wish we could have about six minutes on that, that was about four questions on record. It's a very in-depth thing, and I don't mean any disrespect, I'm just saying that's something I could touch on a lot with law enforcement. I'm a huge proponent of law enforcement, big supporter. I know our local police chief here in the city, I know Sheriff Langley, I've known him for many years. I know our Georgia State Patrol people. Had a good friend of mine that was lieutenant for this area, Joey Bowright. Law enforcement ultimately is the backbone that allows our society to operate with the freedoms that we have, in addition to our military. So without law enforcement, we would not have the law and order and the civilization that we have today that we enjoy in our communities. I can say that I've hired in my special event promotions work, law enforcement from all of those different jurisdictions I just mentioned, the County Sheriff's Department in Carroll County, the local police here in Villarica, and Georgia State Patrol. I know a lot of them, I've been able to work with them, I've seen things that they have to deal with, I've talked with them off the cuff, and I've seen things that they've had to deal with just at my events. And so they are the backbone of our communities, and we need to respect them, and they risk their lives every single day for us. I can tell you, a couple of years ago, friends of mine, Norma Jean Kitty and Ms. Carolyn Henderson, and some others helped create C.C. LEED, which stands for Carroll County Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. They did ask me to help them with the promotion of that, and that's a day that we were able to get everyone, law enforcement and first responders in Carroll County together. I was a part of putting that production together and making sure that we had a day that we recognized them and thanked them, and we prayed with them and prayed over them, and thanked them for the service that they gave our community. So I'm heavily involved in supporting law enforcement, hired many of them, know their tribulations and trials and things they have to deal with on a daily basis. And we have to support law enforcement to have good, safe communities.
I have great admiration for law enforcement. My father-in-law was a sheriff deputy, my mother-in-law was also a sheriff deputy. I've come to know many law enforcement persons at family gatherings, they're part of the family. As an attorney and part of a young lawyers division, I've held first responder clinics where I've had many law enforcement from GSP to the sheriff's office come, and we offer them free wills and state planning documents, power of attorneys, advanced directory for healthcare. Law enforcement is very important to me. It's a major part of my life, it's a major part of my wife's life, and I pray every day for all law enforcement. I have friends that are on the streets these days, and I just think about what they go through. Officers being targeted, sitting in a, you know, sitting in a restaurant just being shot, I mean, it's just sad. And it makes me, I just can't, I just can't understand why somebody would do that. I think the first step is trying to find a way to fully fund what Sheriff Langley wants, within reason, of course, I guess. I mean, if he wants a rocket ship or something, that might be a little out there. But find a way to do that, because he's been in office for 20 years now, I think, and he knows what his department needs. So let's find a way to fund it, as much as we can, and then on top of that, let's see where we can go above and beyond that. Talking to people in the district, they tell me that response times can vary. in the north part of the county where there's no, or the north part of the district where there's no, uh, V O P D out there, there's just on the other side, it can be fifteen minutes, it can be forty-five minutes. It's definitely a part of the county where you wanna make sure you have your, your second amendment rights out there, in case something were ever happened. Um, so we need to find a way to give Sheriff Langley what he asked for, um, within reason, of course, and then beyond that, let's expand on that. Let's come up with some other ideas where we can cut some response times down and find more personnel.
We have time for one or two more questions before we move to closing statements. Uh, Matt, right to Clint, but Matt first, what is your position on T A D's Tax Allocation Districts?
Well, tax allocation districts are something that have become very popular, mostly in metro Atlanta. I think probably one that people don't realize is that the Cumberland Mall area is a tax allocation district. Um, I know we're now looking to implementing one out here in Villarica as part of the Mirror Lake Connector. Um, and it takes, it's an interesting funding proposition. It takes some buy-in by the property owners, um, that there's gonna be an investment in that community. Um, but as long as the property owners are on board with doing the tax allocation district and, and the tax incremental financing, as they call it, um, it could be, it could be very beneficial and be a great way to get economic development project done. It could be a way to, a great way to get a road project done, again, without increasing the property taxes on everybody else in the county.
The T A D, the Tax Allocation District that was, um, just explained the, the meaning of T A D, um, is trying to connect specifically here in the district, the Shoreline Parkway from Mirror Lake and coming in and connecting into downtown. Uh, I've read up on this and done some studying as well. I'm not aware, it is a unique proposition, but I'm not aware of any, uh, T A D that has ever failed, uh, in the state of Georgia. So while they are not, um, uh, overly, um, in every single community overly burdensome, at the same note, there's something that's starting to come about. The T A D, the idea behind it is, is that it's not any type of new tax. It is simply taking the tax, uh, that comes from the industry that's built along, uh, the connectivity route there, and it's used just to build for the infrastructure and pay for the inf- infrastructure in that area. As property values continue to go up above and beyond, um, the property owner does not have to pay tax, in my understanding, on the additional amount that the values go up to. So it's kind of a win-win for the developer, and it's also a win-win for being able to connect, uh, roads and communities such as what the, uh, the community is trying to do here with Shoreline Parkway coming into downtown Villarica. So I've not heard anything really negative on it. My understanding is this is something that could be, uh, on the ballot if, if, in November, it is a referendum, uh, that the taxpayers would have to sign off on, uh, but I've not heard anything negative about it, and I think, uh, this is a part of streamlining and new innovative ways of how can we, uh, continue to look at new innovative ways to help pay, uh, for developing our properties in our areas and making our downtowns more vibrant. And I think this is a, a new method and it has a good track record, so I'm looking forward to see how the taxpayers feel about it.
And finally, counties across the country are advancing aggressive goals to reduce carbon pollution. What do you believe your county should do to support cleaner air? And Clint, would be you first, please?
Um, the carbon footprint here in Carroll County fortunately is not as large as some other, uh, very heavily industrialized communities. In the same note, it's something that we need to look at. Something I would wanna do as, as a commissioner is to continue to work with local industry leaders and let them explain to me new innovative ways, uh, that they're able to help, uh, reduce the, the carbon footprint from an industrial standpoint of view. Uh, as far as a car standpoint of view, or what we think about, uh, of all of the vehicles running around, there's a lot of things that are in being implemented in our communities, uh, such as sidewalks. Uh, you're also looking at electric golf carts, such as the, the community here in Villarica where that's become very popular. Um, you're looking at a lot of different things, uh, the trailhead, the Fullerville Trailhead Project, the ability for people to walk, for people to bike, for people to ride their electric golf carts. Those are all ways that we're gonna be able to reduce the carbon footprint, and the great thing about it is that we're all getting healthier. That's where the incentives are at, uh, when you look at, at large healthcare systems such as Tanner. Uh, that's where they're getting money from, from the government is, how can we keep people out of our hospitals? Obviously, if you've had a wreck, you're gonna go to the hospital, but how can we train people to live healthier? All that goes, ties in hand in hand with reducing the carbon footprint. Uh, keep Carroll beautiful. We look at things that they're doing with litter control, uh, with, uh, the different, uh, gardens that they're planting and so on and so forth, to be able to handle carbon in, in the air. So that is a, a big topic there, and there's a lot of ways that we can try to help reduce that, but a lot of things that we've already got implemented in place that we're starting to see come to fruition.
I think Republicans get, get kind of a bad rap when it comes to environmental issues. They don't realize that a lot of Republicans are conservationists, that they wanna preserve wildlife and wildlands. Um, but when it comes to carbon footprint, again, we probably don't have the carbon footprint Douglas County even has. Uh, one of the ways that we can do that is preserve some of the rural nature of this, of this community, um, and limit the urban footprint that expands. Some of that will be up to the city of Villarica, the city of Temple, the city of Carrollton, as whether or not they want to continue to annex in property and, and transform it from a suburban, or excuse me, from a rural, um, type area or into a more suburban type area, where you're now bringing in homes and cars and stuff. But beyond that, the bicycle connectivity, the Green Belt and the Fairfield, uh, not the Fairfield, but the Fullerville Trailhead that's coming online, um, these are all movements towards, uh, finding ways to get to and from point A to point B without a vehicle. Um, and whether it's on foot or skates or, you know, there's always the famous guy walking, uh, from near my house over towards, uh, Walmart on the horse, so that's always a good one, too. Um, but yeah, carbon footprint, I think anything we can do as we evolve as society, anything that we can do to streamline and make things more efficiently and, and minimize the emissions and environmental impact on, on our environment, that would be a good thing.
And we're now ready for, for closing statements, and since Matt was the first to give an opening statement, Clint will give the first closing statement.
I wanna thank you all again for being here, being engaged citizens. Um, it really means a lot to me, uh, sitting out there in so many different meetings, um, being able to see a full house like this here this evening means a lot to me, and I hope that you'll continue to be a part of your city government here and your government in Carroll County at the Board of Commissioners. At the end of the day, this is a job interview, and while I hope when you leave here this evening, you can say, hey, I think both of these candidates are, are good guys and nice people, and I think that's important. But I hope that you will see the extensive resume, uh, that I have available on social media, the things that I've been able to answer here this evening. There simply is not a replacement for the time and effort that I have spent over decades in this community. Uh, I have lived consecutively on the northern end of Carroll County for over twenty-eight years. I was raised here. I went to school here. I work here. I have paid tens of thousands of dollars, uh, in the city and in the county to do business here through my special event promotions work. I have donated tens of thousands of dollars back to our schools. I have helped buy wrestling mats for Bay Springs Middle School. I've helped the soccer team at Villarica High School. I have helped departments when they didn't have enough money, uh, to operate during the low of the economy. We have given graduating seniors, um, um, scholarships, uh, all from my special event promotions work. And I didn't start that last week and I didn't start that a year ago. Some of this work I started thirteen years ago, uh, when I professionally started working for myself. This is the community that I love. This is the community that I want to continue to serve. And at the end of the day, I hope that you'll look at my resume, and I hope that you will send me to work for you at the county commission. I promise you that if you look at the resume that I presented before you and you check into the things that I've done, I am not going to be beat when it comes to spending time and working hard for this community. There is no one that will outwork me. Thank you for your time and thank you for your vote.
Again, I also wanna thank everyone for coming here tonight, um, and for all those streaming online. I'm running to serve you all. I'm not running 'cause somebody told me to run, or someone said you should do it. I'm running it because I wanna be an active voice for this community. I wanna stay strong, um, I wanna stand up for this community. It doesn't matter if the, the issue is state, local, or federal, I'm gonna be here for you. I live in the community, I'm here every day. I pay a mortgage in this community. I pay tax, home, home property taxes in this community. So we're here every day, and that's our business. As it, as our community grows, it's more, more important that District Two has a voice to stand up for this area, and maybe not a voice that, uh, could get persuaded by outsiders. I hope you pick me as that voice. I think if you look at my resume, I think it's equally as impeccable as Clint's. Um, thank you very much.
Thanks to both of our candidates, and thank you all for attending and producing many good questions, uh, about the city. Uh, we've gotten to a good part of them, we could not get to everything, unfortunately, but, uh, that wraps it up for us, and we wish you all good night.